Welcome to tonight's, hello, welcome to tonight's work session of the Board of Education for us to discuss a potential mandate for a COVID vaccine for students and the impacts of implementing such a vaccine. I'd like to invite our student representative, Jackson Weinberg, to open up tonight's work session.
Good night, everyone. Thank you for coming. I wanted to start off by saying how appreciative I am of staff for putting together this analysis in a relatively short amount of time. The depth of the analysis is wonderful and will hopefully create a wonderful discussion for tonight. I also want to reiterate what I said in my report two weeks ago, that it is our responsibility to ensure that our schools are safe and our students and staff are healthy. The staff analysis also speaks to challenges we would need to overcome for this mandate to be a success, the largest being vaccine access and vaccine hesitancy. With this conversation tonight, I hope that we all center students in our discussion, especially student safety. It will be very easy to go off on tangents tonight, but I would ask that we all keep what's most important at the front of our minds and our discussion: students. Thank you so much. With that, I would love to pass it over to PPS's Chief of Staff, Jonathan Garcia, for an introduction to tonight's workshop session.
Thank you, Student Representative Weinberg. Good afternoon, Directors. It's good to be here with you. Tonight, we're here to discuss the possibility of a COVID-19 vaccine requirement for students 12 years and older at PPS. As we have all experienced firsthand, the global pandemic has been hard on all of us, especially for us in public education. The challenges presented by the global pandemic are occurring at the same time that we are seeing staffing shortages, economic uncertainty, widespread protests over racial injustice and climate justice, tumultuous presidential elections, and the continuing intangible health threat posed by COVID-19. And as we know, the public health, education, and economic uncertainties inflicted by COVID-19 are likely to exacerbate longstanding racial inequities disproportionately affecting Black, Latino, Native American students, English learners, and students with disabilities. Tonight, you will be in discussion with four incredible public health experts who are joining us on the screen, each with deep knowledge, robust medical experience, and public health expertise to provide you information we hope is key to helping you as a collective body provide direction to us as staff. As I indicated in an analysis provided to you yesterday, we know that one of the main reasons individuals receive vaccinations is to help minimize the risk associated with vaccine-preventable diseases. School vaccination requirements specifically help safeguard children and adolescents by making sure they are protected when they get to school. They also serve as impetus for increasing the number of students who get vaccinated against diseases, as seen historically with diseases like measles and varicella. Before I turn it over to our distinguished guests who will introduce themselves to you, I want to share three important points. One, I'm sure you will have questions about implementation plans. With direction from the school board, we believe we can create a plan that balances our competing interests with the best public health guidance that serves our students, their families, and our community. We look forward to partnering with you on that. Secondly, I want to remind all of us that for today's conversation, it is important to acknowledge and accept non-closure. Tonight, we are beginning, not ending, this important conversation. We hope that this will create insights, more probing questions, and thoughts that will help you, and by extension, us, make the best decision that serves our children, especially those who have been impacted most dramatically by the impacts of COVID-19. And finally, I think it's important to acknowledge the words of our student representative at the top of this meeting. We must center our students in this decision. We must be guided by their voice, their experience, their apprehensions, and their thoughts on this type of immunization requirement for PPS. We know that as adults, we all have a diversity of thought and experience that can sometimes shape our worldview. One of the things I'm learning as an adult is the importance of listening to our students, to believe them, and to do right by them. With that, I welcome direct questions and comments from Directors. However, I'm pretty sure you have questions or comments for our public health experts, more importantly, here today. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to them to introduce themselves, and then turn it over to you for questions. We have about 60 minutes for the discussion. So we'll go till about 6:15. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Goodwin, since you're on the top left of my screen, for you to introduce yourself, and then we'll go left, go from there.
Hello, and thank you so much for having me tonight and letting me join this very important discussion. So to introduce myself, my name is Tress Goodwin. I'm an emergency physician here in Washington DC. I take care of both adults and children, and I have served as the Assistant Incident Commander for the COVID-19 pandemic response at my hospital. I'll pass it over to Dr. Joelle Simpson.
Thank you, Tress. My name is Joelle Simpson. I am a pediatric emergency medicine physician. I am Chief of Emergency Medicine at Children's National Hospital here in Washington DC, and I am also Medical Director for Emergency Preparedness for Children's National. I have been involved with our Healthcare Coalition here in Washington DC with regards to the COVID-19 response ever since it was declared a public health emergency, and have been working with multiple school districts within our region, and of course, with you all, in terms of the impact of COVID-19 on kids, everything from testing to now the discussions about vaccination. Thank you.
Dr. Vines, would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure, thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm Dr. Jennifer Vines. I'm the Multnomah County Health Officer. My background is in family medicine and preventive medicine, and I worked as a county health officer almost my entire career, and for most of the last decade at Multnomah County. So I've thought a lot about COVID-19. I've worked a lot on a COVID-19 pandemic school immunization policy, and just happy to hear and hope I can be helpful. I'm also joined by Jessica Guernsey. Go ahead, Jessica.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jessica Guernsey. I use she/her pronouns. I'm the Public Health Director at Multnomah County. I'm also a proud PPS parent. Go Franklin! And it's a pleasure to join you this evening. My background, I think I'm the only non-physician on the panel. My background has been in community public health, running the gamut from HIV/AIDS to actually, quite literally, pandemic planning for H1N1 and many other bodies of work in public health. So thank you for having me.
Great, thank you. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the board. You have four incredible panelists here who can answer any of your questions.
Thank you. So just to let everyone know, I just clarified myself that this is our opportunity to ask questions. We heard last time we had a health panel that there wasn't enough time scheduled, so we've got plenty of time scheduled tonight to ask questions based on what the information that we've received and while we have the health panelists in the room. Who would like to go first?
I can start. I have, I'm not sure if this is a bit of a tangent to begin with, but I do have a question, and I'm interested, Dr. Simpson, if the schools you've been working with in the DC area, do they have vaccine mandates at this time?
They have been discussing the very strong possibility of having vaccine mandates, yes. I know for specific student populations, it's already been announced that there will be mandates, such as those participating in extracurricular activities and what are considered higher risk for infections, such as the wind instruments, singing, those sort of activities, as well as those that require physical contact, limiting the ability to distance.
Actually, I think I'll hold my question till later, but thank you. I was curious about that. Who would like to go next? Director Lowry?
I just had a, we read the incredible staff analysis with such deep work, especially diving into some of the equity questions. But I know that Portland Community College, which is the largest secondary institution in the state and is here in Portland, recently declined to do a vaccine mandate. And so, and the reason they decided was equity issues. And I'm just wondering, as we think about vaccine hesitancy and some of the barriers, how do we, if we do enact this, how do we do so in a way that minimizes the equity impact on especially our students of color? And I don't know if that's anything that any of you can answer, but I'm wondering if Dr. Vines might have some ideas there. Jessica, thank you.
Yeah, I really appreciate that question, and I can tell you, the early work we've been doing around planning for multiple situations, particularly around pediatric vaccinations, the early work that we've done through outreach to culturally-specific community-based agencies and community leaders really indicates a really strong need for what I would call parental and community onboarding. And that's something we've done in public health for the duration of the pandemic, particularly in BIPOC communities. That's a kind of core tenet of public health. So we are really kind of scrolling back and looking at what are we going to need to do to help prepare people to get that information, to make the decisions, especially as it relates to pediatric vaccinations, for the very reasons that you were talking about, because we are seeing a disparity as it is now with teen and adult vaccines, and want to make sure we're addressing questions and creating forums for community to get the information from the leaders that they trust to make these decisions. So that's a big part of what we'll be doing.
One of the things that's interesting to me, Director Lowry, there are so many equity implications in terms of having a mandate or not, but one of the things that's interesting to me is the differentiation in quarantine protocols, whether students are vaccinated or not. And I know there are a lot of districts around the country that are struggling right now, seeing that students of color are disproportionately in quarantine and missing in-person learning time because they are unvaccinated, so they have different quarantine. And I don't know, Chief Garcia, if you want to speak to that and how our mandate might affect evolution of our protocols around quarantine and going to remote learning.
Yeah, so what we know is, as you know, we're guided by public health experts, so in this case, we work closely with MESD. And one of the things that we know is that there are rules around vaccinated individuals and whether or not they have to be quarantined, depending on a number of, you know, issues when they do the investigation. So I would argue that increasing our vaccination increases our chances of not isolating and/or quarantining individuals, per the current guidance.
Go ahead, Director Scott.
Are you sure? Thanks.
I am sure.
Just staying on this equity theme, you know, as these vaccine mandates are being looked at, right, the most successful vaccine mandate is one that's going to increase vaccination rates, right? It's going to provide access and education and tools so that we can see the vaccination rate increase, and we can see, you know, more herd immunity, and it'll protect the community and protect the students. A failure of the policy would be if we went with a vaccine mandate and we did not increase the number of people who were getting vaccinated, and in fact, then ended up, you know, keeping people out of school, right? That would not be a good policy. And I guess what I'm curious, my question is, you know, do we have any evidence from other school districts that have already implemented this? And I know it's just beginning, so we may not. Or other historical examples that would indicate which of those outcomes is most likely? And I know, I really appreciated all the information here about what we are going to do around education and outreach, and I think that's really important. But I'm just curious if there's any historical examples we can point to, or current.
Dr. Goodwin, do you, I think we were talking about this earlier.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer, and that's a great question. And in fact, we do have great examples. So as wonderfully prepared by Jonathan, the summary, so one great example is actually varicella. And for those of us of a certain age, we all remember having chicken pox, and it was a very unpleasant experience. And the varicella vaccine, which is the virus that causes chicken pox, it was approved by the FDA in 1995, but by 2008, only 34% of eligible adolescents were fully vaccinated. And now, school mandates started, and they're now in all 50 states, for varicella vaccines between about 2000 and 2010. And by 2018, about 90% of children had been vaccinated against varicella. So I think that's a really good recent example. More historically, in the 70s, measles vaccines were pretty low, about 40 to 50%, and once those were mandated, it went up dramatically. So yes, we do have excellent examples of how that really does push the needle, and pun is intended on really encouraging people to get their children vaccinated and for children to be protected.
Thank you.
And as you did say, sorry, we don't have good information yet because this is really new. I have not seen any data yet on whether schools implementing COVID vaccination requirements have changed that yet.
Director Bremeris?
So I have a question for, I guess, all of you, because you all might have a different take from your perspectives. And first, I want to acknowledge the great background information provided by staff, really helpful, laying the foundation for just our thinking and the discussion. But as part of the information, you know, I was looking through it, it seems like the 16 to 18 requirement, 16 to 18-year-old requirement seems like kind of an obvious. There's been full approval, it's not an emergency use. But when you get to the 12 to 15, if PPS were to require vaccines for that age group, we would be potentially head of OHA and the Oregon Health Authority and the CDC. Is that primarily because their processes are just slower, and it just takes longer for them to get to the same, the same point of we should, that group of students should have vaccines? Or is it, is there something in the science or health requirements that they're thinking about that is leading them to have a longer process versus us being able to move before they do? And I'm interested in everybody's opinion, just a little bit from, you know, are we getting ahead of OHA for the Multnomah County people? And then, are we getting ahead of the CDC in mandating something that doesn't yet have full approval? Or are we just more nimble?
So I will jump in on this question. I can't speak to the full FDA process. It is lengthy. I think it's really important to realize that the risk-benefit calculation for a vaccine, it's fantastic the older you are. As you get younger, kids are much less likely to have severe COVID or long-term problems from COVID. I'll let our pediatrician experts speak more to that. But I think it becomes really important to understand the side effect profile of a vaccine. And then, as you construct your mandate, if that side effect profile is acceptable, whether it's under emergency use approval or full approval, I would urge you to really think through what your goal is, and then how, if you decide to go with a vaccine mandate, how to construct a mandate that really tees you up to reach that goal and minimize the potential harms, especially where equity is concerned.
When it comes, sorry. When it comes to FDA approval of anything with regards to children, it is not uncommon for it to take a bit longer and sort of more nuanced studies, just because the evolving immune system of children is a very intricate science. And often, as you can imagine, it is a multi-step process, one of which is just even having families that are willing to enroll their children in trials. That is much more nuanced than the average adult volunteering to be part of a trial. And that's one of the reasons, just one of multiple reasons as to why it takes a little bit longer for the FDA to approve things for younger age groups. In order to get to the numbers, to consider something efficacious and safe, that takes much longer in that smaller, you know, only 25% of our population is under 18. So to get to a percentage and a number enough to say that this is safe, that math just sort of works out that it may take longer. So I think part of what you were asking is, are you being nimble? Yes, I think that in this particular urgency of the pandemic, we do have a lot of entities, and I can speak to our healthcare system, where we have mandated for our employees, out of that same cost-benefit analysis that Dr. Vines just mentioned, and realizing that the impact of the vaccine and mandating it to increase vaccination rates on the effect of our community is so significant, it became something that a lot of health systems decided to mandate. And I think that school systems have a similar question, because schools are such a hub of the community and a nexus for spread and so forth in terms of the overall population numbers. But I agree, it's an interesting discussion in terms of which comes first in terms of from the EU, the emergency use authorization, or whether it makes sense to try to mandate before that has gone to full approval. It may take some time before it gets to full approval because of all the list of reasons that I mentioned as it pertains to this.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to add one thing. So the CDC gives recommendations, but they don't actually create mandates. That's all at a state level and even more local than that. So for example, Los Angeles was the first big district to mandate vaccines, but there isn't a similar law or mandate at the state level. So I think waiting for a national mandate, that's just not how our country is designed. And so, you know, I think the CDC will make recommendations, and always does, but they're not legislatively strong enough or not positioned to make mandates.
And if I may just add, I think from my understanding from, looking at the landscape across the country, and it's been said before, districts like LAUSD have mandated it for 12 and up, so folks that are, the vaccine that is under emergency use authorization and that one that's full authorized, and districts like San Diego are contemplating only requiring vaccines for those that, with 16 and over, for those that have been FDA-approved. So just wanted to note that for the record.
I have a question, and this is on pages, the bottom of page three, and the top of page four, where it talks about the case rate, the pediatric case rate in Multnomah County being the lowest, the fourth lowest, I'm sorry, in Oregon. I'm wondering if we have anyone on the panel that would be able to speak to projections? I know the projections for the Delta variant in terms of when it would peak here were pretty accurate, and I'm just wondering if we know, if we take path, one path that mandates vaccines versus another, what does that look like in terms of community spread?
I will try to answer that question. The statewide forecasts, you're right, have largely been accurate in terms of a peak approximately two weeks ago. They continue to model a fairly steep drop through roughly November. And then, there are different, there are sort of differing theories about whether we actually drop back to June or July levels, which would be great, or if we hit just sort of a lower plateau, which is what happened in the United Kingdom. So we also have to remember that we're entering the typical respiratory season, so things like flu, other cough and cold viruses are going to start to circulate as well, which is going to confuse the picture. But with respect to COVID-19, we expect things to improve over the next several weeks, and we don't have another variant on the horizon that we think is going to take over anytime soon.
And sure to pass, I'm getting a printed copy of the projections developed by Dr. Peter Graban, who serves on our health advisory panel and also works at OHSU. He's the statewide leader on looking at projections. So I have a copy coming your way to inform what that looks like in the next three months.
Okay, so the case rates are expected to go down, and is that down and then coming back up again at some point, or do we just don't, we just don't know yet?
It's down, down to some low, yet to be determined. Hopefully, very low, but maybe just a slower burn plateau.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
May I just add one comment that Dr. Vines touched on, which is that one of the differences in analyzing these trends is we are not yet sure about the impact of co-infection with flu on other respiratory illnesses and what that does to the immune system of children that then might change their vulnerability to COVID-19. It's just one of the sort of wild cards of what we are guessing and hoping does not contribute to an uptick in the illness of kids who might have COVID-19 now that are doing quite fine, but then as we increase the rates of flu and RSV and all the other common viruses we know are going to hit for the winter season, we already are seeing co-infection with kids with COVID-19 here in our hospitals. We're not sure whether that might play out to cause a worsening situation among children. This is just a wild card that we're anticipating and hoping does not come to fruition.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for being here today. As I've been reading a lot about this stuff, I'm trying to figure out, like, what are some of the safety signals that has came up regarding the COVID-19 vaccine from Pfizer, since that's the one I know the FDA is talking about using or approving? So what are some of the safety signals that has came up in regards to that vaccine?
So you want me to get familiar, that was in the documentation, is that there's a pretty elaborate vaccine adverse event reporting system. As a pediatrician, I'm very used to using that system because we're the primary vaccinators for the population, since children receive more vaccines than adults usually do. But that being said, what we've known so far with, across both the pediatric and the adult populations, is that the number one sort of side effect, so to say, has been syncope, I believe. Dr. Goodwin, I know we reviewed that data. So syncope meaning fainting spells. And we see that as a common side effect of a lot of vaccines, not unique necessarily to COVID-19. We've also seen a couple sort of allergic reactions, and I think there's been some warnings of some substances that folks may have a history of being allergic to, one being polyethylene glycol, which is, has shown some correlation with possibly having an adverse reaction to the COVID-19 vaccine. But overall, other side effects that have been in the literature that I just want to address, and many of them we presume to be part of the immune response of the vaccine anyway, has been focused on kids, has been some information around myocarditis, which is a sort of inflammatory condition of the heart. What we've seen for kids that have had that condition, which, by the way, is a very uncommon event, but when it does occur, is also a very brief event, with as far as we can tell so far, has no long-term complications in terms of continued studies we've done via both echo or ultrasound of the heart as well as lab studies, that these children have been rebounding much quicker than the typical myocarditis that we would see from other viruses, that we actually commonly see in our emergency department, where kids do not do well. So what's been highlighted is kids have myocarditis, but it is not the classic myocarditis that you would Google. It is a very brief, short-lived event with very minimal consequences. In fact, I will say just anecdotally to you, most of the patients I've taken care of have not been in the hospital for more than 24 to 48 hours after they were diagnosed with the event, and have gone home to still play sports and do just fine in their communities. And that's been documented in literature across multiple children's hospitals that have been seeing that particular condition.
Also, looking at, because this is something that, with the EAU piece, that has gone really rapidly, even though they have, you know, getting a bunch of data for it, what are some of the post-marketing surveillance that is going on around the COVID vaccine?
Can you repeat that question? Garrett, please.
What are some of the post-surveillance processes that is going on surrounding the COVID vaccine?
I'm happy to answer that, too. Yes, so just like Dr. Simpson mentioned, the vaccine adverse events system that the CDC has developed has been in place for a very long time, and they encourage any concerns to be, to be reported, and then they will do a full investigation. So in fact, they looked at these, the events that Dr. Simpson just described, myocarditis. In fact, there were, I think, around 2,000 reported, and they ended up only attributing less than half of those to the vaccine itself. So they're reported, and they have a team, and they'll do more investigation to see if it can actually be attributed. It's a very rigorous process and one that's been in place for a very long time. And so that's kind of on the medical level. And then, on the more surveillance level, if any of you, once you got your vaccine, you were encouraged to report in VSafe, which is an app, and they are then using that data to kind of watch some of the more mild symptoms. And that, again, is being analyzed very, very rigorously. So I have full faith that the CDC, you know, they've been doing vaccines for a very long time, and they have really applied the knowledge and the infrastructure. long time, and they have really applied the knowledge and this infrastructure from prior vaccines and really expanded it and done an excellent job with the COVID vaccine rollout.
I will also add that is, as it's typical with science, that once a vaccine has been issued to the public, it also allows those of us in academia to challenge and create our own studies and be sure that we are also creating sort of an analysis of what's going on in our own populations, because you can always imagine that one can say, well, the pharmaceutical company did their study, how do we really trust them? Then we can say, the government did their study, how do we really know? But then there's private citizens like myself and others that conduct our own studies and analyze our own data for the population that we provide vaccines for, and we also contribute that to the literature that is peer-reviewed and critiqued. That has been ongoing at multiple institutions. In fact, people are sort of building their careers off of this in the private and academic world, I will let you know. The amount of people that have kind of published papers on COVID-19 is amazing right now. So, that is another aspect of quote-unquote post-market surveillance that has been going on fairly regularly, especially for children.
I have a question. One of our chapters or paragraphs is reports on the vaccination rates by race and ethnicity. Can somebody maybe perhaps from Multnomah County speak to the hesitancy, particularly for, from communities of color, that we know that are disproportionately impacted by the impacts of COVID, are hitting Latino, Black, and Native American communities harder for multitude of reasons?
Sure, I can speak to some of what we're, we've been seeing. I mean, as I mentioned before, that's a big part of what we're focusing on through our community partnership efforts, working closely with culturally specific, community-based agencies. I want to be careful how this is framed, because I, what, what I see is a slower uptake with each, each, you know, engagement that we're able to help support, whether it's our staff directly or working with community-based agencies. Folks need to hear from community leaders that have shared lived experience and from, from folks that they trust, and that's been a big part of what we've been doing. We've been seeing our largest growth in vaccine uptake, albeit slow, in BIPOC communities over the last several weeks. So, a combination of, I think folks are generally worried about the Delta variant. We have overlaid a incentive program to our vaccine efforts to offset the costs of people pursuing vaccine. We know that not everybody has equal access to transportation, childcare, et cetera. And then also, an increase in workplace vaccine mandates has also driven the uptick. But a lot of what we're doing is continuing to hold culturally specific forums where people can get questions answered by folks that they trust and have shared lived experience. And so, what I see is the progress we're seeing is incremental. It, it isn't happening as fast as other, other non-Hispanic white groups, but we're making progress there, and I think that's why I mentioned that at the beginning. That's a continued effort that we're going to be undergoing for the next, you know, six to eight months.
Thank you. And then I have a kind of a follow-up question for staff, and that's, we're, we're going to be holding a couple of community forums to hear from people, and do we have any targeted outreach to, to communities of color that might have hesitancy for, for one reason or the next?
Yeah, great question, Chair DePass. So, we have not created any plans. We are anticipating, following this discussion, to begin to, to think about how we engage with our community to hear different perspectives. So, absolutely, we definitely would, would prioritize and want to make sure that we're listening to communities that have shown hesitancy. So, on page nine of our analysis, you could see a study done by the African-American Research Collaborative around some of the hesitancy pieces. So, so we, we, we are very much listening to and trying to understand where and what the hesitancy is, because that will inform how we engage and how we communicate with our broader community.
Yeah, and I think, I think someone mentioned it earlier, but the trusted messenger, you know, community leaders in specific communities is a great way to go. Thank you.
So, I have a couple more questions. Now, what we've known about the antibodies that's waning over time is, they're talking about using booster shots and stuff now, is that something for our kids that is going to be happening as time goes on, as the antibodies wane from the original vaccine shot?
The brief answer is probably is it's too early to tell, but my pediatrician's perspective is that we don't often need boosters for majority of our vaccines. In fact, as Dr. Goodwin mentioned, for instance, the chickenpox vaccine usually lasts for a lifetime until you're much older and at risk for shingles, which is also activated by the virus that causes chickenpox. So, the immune system of children is quite robust, and it is possible that they may not need a booster. But once again, you know, we're still sort of seeing what's happening with COVID-19, coronaviruses in general, the other types of coronaviruses is rampant around the pediatric population on an average winter pre-pandemic. And so, their immune system and response to the coronavirus in general is very different than adults who typically aren't as exposed as our daycares and our school systems where this runs them up, for lack of a better word. So, we will be analyzing the need for a booster. I think it's 50/50 as to whether they may need one because of those reasons.
Thank you.
Director Green, did you have a question? I'm trying to get, learn everybody's body language here, so bear with me.
No, I didn't really have a question. I, I guess now since I hear, it's two, it's two, actually. With the, with this vaccine that they're talking about for the younger kids, isn't it only like half the dose of the other shot or something like that anyway? And then if it's the, if it's true, what you're saying that the vaccine, or the, excuse me, the immune system of our young people is, is so much different than what we're aware of, and is it, and it's, you know, extremely resilient, as I've heard you say, that it bounces back, is it possible that they could not get COVID anyway? Like, is, do they have to have the, the vaccine?
I'm happy to answer the vaccine dose question, that's excellent. And so, right now with the Pfizer vaccine, it's 0.3 mls is the standard dose for adults and for children 12 and up. So, that is the dose that when they started last spring, they, the first thing they did was they determined what the most effective dose was for that, this size. And then the vaccine that has just been submitted to, or being submitted right now for an EUA is 0.1 mls, which one-third the amount of vaccine that will be given in a two-dose series, three weeks apart, just like the vaccines for 12 and up. And in terms of, you know, their, their more robust response, you know, it's, it's, they determined this was, this was not a number that was picked out of thin air, they, they really did test, looking at the different doses and determined that this was the most effective dose that, that caused the most effective number of antibodies.
And Dr. Goodwin, that 0.1 is for kids five to 11, correct? That's what the submission is for that population? We're not looking at below five at this time?
At below five, we don't have any information yet. They're currently working on it, and again, the first, the very first thing that they do before they roll it out to a bigger group is they determine the most effective dose. So, that I imagine is ongoing. I have not seen any data released yet.
No, the, I guess my second question was, and I, I don't know if anyone answered it, was, is it possible that our younger kids could do well without having the vaccine at all?
I think what we're seeing right now is that we've, you know, there was a debate earlier on in the pandemic whether or not kids could spread this virus. We now know that they can, and I personally have seen that for the hundreds of kids that have come into my emergency department and are positive for COVID-19. So, we know that they can have the infection, and we hope that similar to adults, that the administration of a vaccine will lower that risk of infection, but also lower, if they do become infected, the period of any degree of symptoms that they might have and any other risk factors, not just for themselves, but really for the communities they live in, including the other high-risk folks that they could be around, including pregnant mothers, grandparents, and those who are immunocompromised that we know definitely have very poor outcomes if they do contract COVID-19. Even the vaccinated individuals unfortunately can spread the infection. I wish the vaccine could be the one cure-all and, and limit the ability to spread, but we do know that it has the ability to spread among people even if they are vaccinated, although it shortens that period that they, that potentially they, they could spread, that there's that, still that exposure risk.
Dr. Simpson, thank you for that. Can, can, I just, I'm going to ask you to, just to follow up on that specific point, there's a lot of information out there, mostly on social media and probably not necessarily accurate, that the vaccine does nothing to decrease your chances of getting COVID-19 or passing it on. And I just would like you to repeat what you just said, and actually, if you could sort of answer the question, is that considered settled science right now from your perspective? That it does, well, it does not eliminate your ability, you know, your chances of getting it or spreading it, it does reduce those?
So, you know, I've, I've thought about multiple ways to answer this question. As you can imagine, it's one of the most popular questions we get, and I'll speak to the experience of running in a large emergency department with a lot of providers who fortunately did get vaccinated, but we're swimming in COVID because kids are coming in and families are coming in COVID-positive all the time. I truly 100% believe that our vaccination rates, in addition to our masking and compliance with the other policies around protecting from COVID-19, is what keeps us all safe and able to staff our hospitals so we can care for kids. COVID-19 still becomes an issue because some of our staff do get infected. And many times when we've traced that back to exposure because they realized they were around someone where they did not have their mask, even though they're vaccinated, I have, I have heard of, or from our employees that have become positive, it's still awful, it's still pretty nasty, but they are so much happier that they were vaccinated, and the period of time for which they were sick was much shorter than those in their family that had not been vaccinated yet. That's sort of anecdotal, but it does play out in the numbers and the research that we've been doing so far. I see Dr. Vines has her hand up, so I don't know if you have something to add to that.
Thank you. If I could, we actually have local data on this exact question. We looked specifically at how the vaccine performed in June versus July, so literally pre-Delta versus Delta, based on what we were seeing locally. The bottom line is that the vaccine was 90% effective at preventing infection in June, and it was about 75% effective in July. So, basically, it went from excellent protection to pretty good protection from even getting infected, and of course, you probably have all heard that across the board, it's excellent at preventing severe disease and hospitalization. I do think, and I, I appreciate the perspective of our emergency room pediatricians here, because those stories haunt me. From a population perspective, though, Oregon is at less than one child per 100,000 hospitalized with COVID-19. So, to the question of, do kids, do kids need this to be okay? Again, I think that's where I would urge you to decide what, what is your public health goal with a vaccine mandate. Certainly, the more people that are vaccinated, the better off we are as a community, the fewer quarantines we have, potentially the more confidence parents have in this school. But I, I appreciate your dialogue and taking the time to go through some analysis and some questions, because I think there are different ways to look at this question.
Yes, Superintendent?
Thank you, Chair, and I just want to express my gratitude to our esteemed, good doctors and our panel and our local public health experts for your continued guidance as, as we navigate this pandemic locally. My, my question is, is this one, as, for a school system that is interested in implementing every reasonable health and safety measure, would you consider our consideration of a student vaccine mandate to be a helpful next tool as we try to confront this pandemic? Is that maybe a little bold, but is, is it reasonable to adopt an incremental approach, perhaps that looks at extracurricular, then 12 and up, and then maybe with approval, perhaps younger students? Is that a reasonable next step for us? Would you advise us to proceed with caution? What, what would be your opinion from a policy perspective as a pre-K-12 school system, whether that makes sense for us?
I'd like to add that, you know, a question about the costs versus, you know, the benefits.
So, I've gotten this question in the private meetings with our Health Advisory Network, and I, I will put out there that you'll be hard-pressed to find a pediatrician that did not support vaccinating everybody. So, that's just sort of the culture of my career, because vaccine science is so embedded in my practice and, and so forth. That being said, I think what Dr. Vines said is, is truly the, a core issue here, which is the outcome that you are looking for. There's so many factors, as you've mentioned here, in terms of the issues around equity. We certainly have, we've, we, we understand that there's complexities in terms of what the parents have been voicing to you in terms of concerns about student rights and parent rights, and those have to be sort of acknowledged in terms of independent health decisions, even in the context of a pandemic. So, I, I guess I'm somewhat hedging, although at, at the bottom line of my recommendation it is that I would support vaccinations if you are asking for my personal opinion. But I will defer to the rest of the panel to hear their thoughts as well.
I mean, I'll chime in to say, you know, I think it's reasonable to consider this among the toolbox of, of tools progressively as we move into the school year. We're, we're, we're only in, you know, a couple, couple weeks, and I don't know if I said this at the beginning, but just want to express my gratitude to PPS for their amazing creative work in doing everything they can to mitigate the spread of COVID and keep kids, families, and communities protected. I, I think it's reasonable to consider, but again, I'm going to chime in and say, I think it's really important to scroll back and look at the concentric circles of impact based on what you're trying to do. We are seeing quite a few vaccine mandates among employers, Multnomah County included, and I just, I, I think it's really important to take stock in terms of what impact may occur that could interrupt education or any other, you know, goal that is, you know, on par with, with, with COVID. And Dr. Vines, I don't know if you would chime in on anything else?
Yeah, thanks. I have a few points to share. I think the first thing I would say is, is it reasonable to consider yes? Because testing isolation and quarantine are, are not nearly as effective as vaccine, period. I think the next piece in considering a mandate is, you know, the, the spirit of a public health vaccine mandate, and I'm a public health person, I, I support vaccines, but the spirit of a mandate comes once you feel that you've exhausted all of your voluntary pathways. And then if you do go with a mandate, that sounds very like yes or no, you're in or you're out, but there are always exemptions. And then how you construct your exemptions, and then what you do with those who meet the criteria for exemptions or not, that all really matters in terms of both achieving your goal and also achieving the equity piece.
I was just going to add one more thing on a science level in terms of vaccines, is that we know that coronaviruses in particular are very, very good at creating variants, they're fast at it, and so, from a public health perspective and the longevity of this pandemic, the least number of people, whether they're little or big, getting infected and giving the virus a playground to create new variants is really important. So, kind of taking it out of the individual, even out of the community, but looking at it more from a global perspective, vaccines play a very, very important role in limiting that, that trajectory.
Do you, do you have a question? Does anyone else, oh, did you have a question?
My question was, hearing that the Multnomah Health Department has done multiple rounds of community engagement to try to reduce vaccine hesitancy and decrease barriers to accessing the vaccine, what role do you think PPS can play in assisting this work? Or what more can we be doing, I guess, is the better question?
Yeah, I mean, what we've found is that schools are, are one of the most trusted conduits of messaging, so I think the more that you all can do to engage and open dialogue, and, and just so you all know, when we're doing this, it's not, it's not, you know, the experts telling people what they should do. It is truly a dialogue that sometimes can be uncomfortable, because really, a lot of what we're talking about are very real.
what we're talking about are very real historic transgressions that have occurred in many communities that are very painful and real. There's, that's why I'm careful about calling it, I know we generally say vaccine hesitancy, but sometimes that implies something that's removed from some real history that we have in medicine and public health that's actually perpetrated arm on people. So I think the more that we can be comfortable and the more the schools can be comfortable, you all in PPS and other districts to host conversations, to just bear witness to people's process of, of making a decision, I think is incredibly valuable. Um, that's what makes you trusted. So I think the more that we can do that, I think especially with the pediatric vaccines, um, and teen vaccines, the better off we're going to be as a community. And again, it's not about trying to convince people, it is very much an exchange of listening to people's experience and, um, their own history. So I, I think the more that you all can do that, the, the better. So, and hopefully that answers your question.
Dr. Brim Edwards?
Thanks. Just a comment on what you just said, when I was out at Harrison Park when the governor was out there, the fact that Aplano, um, was the partner for the vaccine clinic, um, clearly made a difference in the acceptance. I mean, the place, it was crowded, they had way more people than they thought they were going to have, um, but clearly people were coming because it was their neighborhood school and, um, with community partners that they trusted. Um, so appreciate you making that point. Um, I had a question.
Sorry, Director Brim Edwards, 190 people got vaccinated that day.
190? Yeah, I think we had anticipated 125. It, it was incredible. And whole families came up, came to get vaccinated together. Um, on the FD, full FDA approval, I'm wondering if, um, we saw an uptick when, um, in people once it moved from emergency use to full approval, whether that was like something that was a shift for people that like, I'm just not sure, and then they, they, they shifted? And if, if that in fact occurred, what, um, what could we do in our outreach and our communications to share why, if we moved ahead even it was still an emergency use, which sounds like something's in, not the same as full approval? Um, like what, what would those things be that we could communicate to people? Like, it, we're comfortable with this and we think the science shows that this is the, the right thing to do. And maybe, maybe it didn't cause an uptake, but that's what I thought the data showed when there was full approval.
Go ahead.
I have one quick thing to say. I think one of the things that people confuse with EUA is that it's experimental use, not emergency use, and that might be one of the factors because there's a lot of myth out there that it is under experimentation, and it is not. That has to be very, very clear. Emergency use still means that it's being studied rigorously, uh, before being issued to the population. And that was all I wanted to add. But Dr. Goodwin, you can go.
Yeah, I was just going to add, I, I think that the mandate, um, actually, or, sorry, that full approval then opened the door for a lot of mandates, um, be, like the, the military, um, while they did have an, issued a mandate, they were anticipating full approval, um, and a lot more, um, organizations like we've been seeing in New York, um, they, they announced their mandate to be at the end of this month, and they've seen a dramatic uptick in the last week. So it's hard to know whether that was, the shift was from the, um, full approval versus just more, you know, um, temporally related to mandate. So I don't, I don't know, um, when, when asked, looking at polling, it didn't seem that full approval really, um, was a big difference, um, in people kind of still feeling, um, they're, they're having their concerns. Um, so I, I don't, I don't think that we have a real clear answer on that.
I would say that in terms of the education and discussion with community, that particular topic is one that really does need to be unpacked, as Dr. Simpson was just mentioning. There's a lot of misconceptions about rush timelines, um, you know, misinterpreting or not having, I mean, you know, I wouldn't expect every person walking down the street to have a full understanding of what this process looks like. So a lot of questions pertain to that process and really just, just dispelling some of the misinformation regarding, like I said, rush timelines, missteps, what it actually means to have that emergency authorization, and, um, that's what we spend a lot of time talking to folks about.
Great, thank you.
Um, Director Green?
I think the lady at the top, um, Ms. Goodwin, partially answered what I was looking at, but I'll, I'll, I'll address it, or say it so that it can be very specific to find out what we're, what I'm asking for. Um, in the communities that I've been speaking with and about, you know, the vaccine and why we're doing it and the mandate, has there been any discussion or looking into the numbers that we're seeing going up because people are feeling forced or bullied, um, like because employers are saying, you're not going to be able to come to work, schools are saying you can't some, come to schools or you can't play in sports, or you're not going to be able to get on flights if you don't have this mandate, so, or you don't have this vaccine? So as a result of people feeling pressured, not feeling comfortable, feeling bullied by big government, big school, big jobs, I don't want to lose my this, that, and the third, so I'm going to have to do this, and I don't know what it's going to do to me. And now you're telling me that I have to do, I have to also do this to my children and we don't know what it's going to look like for them. So the, those are my dialogues and those, the, that's the information that I'm hoping to hear in this, in this conversation, in that it was one thing when you force it upon the parents and, you know, they, it sucked, but they had to deal with it. Now you're telling them to impose this same thing onto their children and that's where their concern and pushback is. So I'm looking to see if there's any dialogue, any data, anything that shows that this uptick that we're seeing, is it truly a result of people loving the vaccine and wanting the vaccine, or is this a fear tactic that government is using to coerce people to do different things?
Um, I can, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, um, at the public health vaccination clinics, um, we see a combination of reasons for people coming in and a uptick in, um, demand for the vaccine. Um, fear of the Delta variant is, is definitely present. Um, people are seeing, um, more people get sick, um, more people hospitalized, and unfortunately more people die, so I think it's become very real, um, for folks, um, that have sought vaccine at our clinics. Um, I mentioned the, um, incentive program, um, certainly helping to offset costs for folks to seek vaccination has been helpful. And then we have heard from folks that, um, vaccine mandates for work, um, have been a driver for people to seek vaccine. Um, I have not heard from our staff, um, qualitatively that folks are describing it as, um, bullying, um, but people are identifying, uh, that the ability to go back to work, um, is a driver in some of their decisions.
Uh, thank you for that. I have, um, a question, let's see.
Sorry, Dr. Dr. Simpson, I think.
I apologize, uh, Dr. Simpson?
No, I was just going to add what Dr. Vines had mentioned earlier too, is that pretty much every mandate has the ability and allows for exemptions, and those exemptions range from self-declarating you have a religious reason or a medical reason and so forth. So there has been, uh, the experience of our hospital, which is similar to many others, um, where, you know, that is respected, um, despite all the other sort of, um, uh, information that is, that is being shared about mandates. There is always that opportunity and that has been across the board from my, from my, um, analysis of the, of just the experience, at least within my area, my region, uh, between DC, Maryland, and Virginia. I believe that's fairly common. It is impossible to do a hundred percent mandate without allowing for exemptions.
You just inadvertently answered my question. My question had to do with, um, which exemptions should be considered, you know, rather, you know, philosophical or medical, um, if, if we should consider exemptions and what would those, what would those be?
So I, I'll just add a little bit more to this question. Um, I, I think, yes, you have to have exemptions, there are always medical exemptions, so there will be people, um, rare, uh, who will not be able to get vaccinated for medical reasons. What we have heard from our community advisory board at the Health Department on this is the spirit of a vaccine mandate, again, should be that you've exhausted your voluntary pathways and that getting the vaccine should be easier than getting the exemption, but the exemptions shouldn't be impossible. And I struggle a bit with the religious exemptions, um, that the, the state has put forward that many are also adopting because really no major world religion is, is fundamentally opposed to vaccination, and so that, that doesn't quite resonate with me. But Oregon has a long history of the personal belief exemptions, um, and that can come with , uh, education requirements that, you know, there are other things you can add to that, again, to try to encourage voluntary acceptance. Um, but again, what we heard from our community through an equity lens is that getting the vaccine should be easier than getting the exemption, but I think, um, in Multnomah County, we've always felt that the exemption pathway was an important one specifically to acknowledge, um, that individual choice.
Uh, Director Scott, yes?
Thanks.
And then Director Brim Edwards?
Um, just following up on the, on that question, and, and maybe this is more for, um, Chief Garcia, um, in the memo, you talk a little bit about different exemptions and, and sort of, you know, Oregon does as, as, um, Dr. Vines just mentioned, have a philosophical exemption for, for vaccines generally. I, I didn't see it, I apologize if I missed it, um, any staff recommendations about what PPS might do? I think there was reference to that there may be some flexibility there, so it's kind of a legal question of what flexibility would we have? And then it's a question whether staff have developed yet, uh, um, recommendation on, on what, as a district, we would, we would, would we, would we just sort of go with the existing exemptions in state law, or would we do something more restrictive?
Great question. We have not come up with that.
Okay, thank you. So that's part of the, as you mentioned at the beginning, lots of implementation questions still to be answered.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So I have a follow-on, that was, it's not the question I was going to ask, but I have a follow-on. Um, just to establish for the record, um, PPS does have, even though there's a state process, PPS does have the legal authority to mandate it.
Yes.
Okay. Um, I thought that was the case, but might as well get it on the record. Um, so just to follow on the exemption question, um, because there's obviously outcomes for students if they don't get vacs, vaccinated or if they, um, don't have an exemption. And I respect the, um, the fact that we do need exemptions. Uh, the, the question or the framing would be if you have, um, if you allow exemptions, who is most likely, like who currently gets those exemptions? Uh, because my recollection is when we looked at some data at some of our individual schools that had, um, higher rates of unvaccinated students, they were primarily, um, higher socioeconomic schools, so, uh, schools where students, families had the ability to, um, go, you know, figure out how to go get an exemption. I'm just wondering what sort of data we have and what we know about how people, how, how you get exempted from the pro, the process. And I guess in Oregon, it would be most relevant for the, not for the medical exemption, but for the personally held, strongly held belief exemption. Maybe that's a Multnomah County question?
So we, we do have some data on exemptions that we could, um, bring back, um, to this group. I don't have it at my fingertips, but it is something we've looked at very carefully. Um, we've had, um, you know, lots of conversations about our work around vaccine uptake predating COVID-19 for, um, more routine, uh, diseases that, that were, continue to be concerned about in terms of their relationship to ensuring that there's uptake of vaccine, so we'd be happy to bring some additional information back.
Great, that'd be helpful. Do we have, is this maybe a question for the Superintendent or Chief Garcia? Do we have school-based, um, information on our, uh, for the rest of the vaccines that are?
We do, we can, we can get that for you. We, in, in slide, um, or it's not slide, page, uh? Let's see. Page 14, um, is the, how many age, uh, school-age kids are up to date on vaccines in Multnomah County, uh, as of, uh, March 2021? So, uh, that's the latest data we have at the county level. I can get back the school data, the PPS school-specific data.
And I guess, um, this is like getting down to more of the operationalization of any sort of mandate, but just looking at, again, how the equity of exemptions, um, in our process, um, and, uh, for, for those students whose family, maybe families can't navigate the exemption process, what the outcome for that is, so just make sure that we look at that aspect.
Absolutely. And, you know, for what it's worth, um, and we have data around the COVID-19 and staff mandate. Um, as, as you all know, 94.7% of our staff are fully vaccinated, 4.3% are not. Of those, 1.84% have asked for a religious exemption, and only point 3.4 have asked for a medical exemption or a deferral. So just to give you a kind of a tangible data point of COVID-19.
I just want to, um, bring everyone's attention to the time. It's 6:15. Um, our, our special guests, Drs. Goodwin, um, Dr. Simpson are on, on the East Coast, so it's late where you are. I want to be respectful of your time. Um, I want to thank all of our guests, um, our Multnomah County, Dr. Vines, and, um, Ms. Guernsey for being here tonight again, and, um, really appreciate your input. If anybody has further questions, I would ask that they forward them to Chief Garcia, um, so he could act as the go-between, uh, to keep it smooth. But, um, again, I want to thank you all, um, for your questions, um, and your curiosity about this. This is, uh, none of us have experience, uh, doing this work in this environment, and, um, I've appreciated, um, learning with you tonight. We're adjourned. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.